Call the work session to order. This is the work session scheduled for October 10, 2017 of the Portsmouth City Council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the role?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Where's him?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Our presentations this evening will provide insight into the programmatic offerings of the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services and the Department of Social Services. Across the city of Portsmouth, daily there are citizens in need of humanistic services to assist with the five levels of what Maslow's hierarchy of needs. As a humanist, Maslow believed that people have an inborn desire for self-actualized, that is, to be all that they could possibly be. In order to achieve these ultimate goals, however, a number of more basic needs must be met, such as the need for food, safety, love, and self-esteem. It is the basic area of need in which both departments provide an umbrella of services to help when and where assistance is needed. Ms. Elaine Breakway, Director of Behavioral Healthcare Services, and Mrs. Pamela Littlehill are our presenters for this evening. We will begin with Behavioral Healthcare Services, Mrs. Breakway.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of Council. Today I will present to you what's going on with the opiate epidemic and what our agency is doing to meet those challenges. As you can see with the opiate statistics, deaths among opiates have increased dramatically. According to the Center of Disease Control, in the last 16 years, 183,000 Americans have died from overdose related to prescription opiates. The increase in the last two years have really grown up. In 2015, the adults ages 25 to 54 has the highest death rate. The number of overdose increased at a rate of 30 deaths per 100,000. In the first half of 2016, the total number of fatal overdose in Virginia increased 35% compared to the same time period in 2015. The fatal overdose included natural synthetic opiates such as morphine and oxycodone and methadone. This fell between 2010 and 2015, the percentage of fatal overdose of heroin tripled. Just to give you an example of what has happened in Portsmouth one day, on November 13, 2016, there were six calls of overdose, and these calls came within a time of 12 hours. The medics were able to save five, but by the time they got to the sixth person, the sixth person actually died. The five that were saved were saved through the use of Narcon. Narcon is a drug that reverses the effects of heroin overdose, and it was used by the medics. This Narcon is something that the fire department, emergency medic staff have with them when they go out because of the increase within our city with overdoses. So in order to try to save the lives, that is what they use. Now, I want to give you an example of some statistics in America, just to give you an idea of what's going on. I know for me, what really made me realize how epidemic this was, was when I did see those statistics. In America, these are deaths, not just overdose, but they contributed to deaths in the United States. This statistical information comes from the Center of the Disease Control. As you can see, there has been an increase among males. People are using, like I said, synthetic drugs. There's been an increase. And then what they do is they categorize between fentanyl and heroin, and the increase there is also. As you can see, the ages, like I said, between 25 and 54, how much they've increased, from the .2 to 14 percentages of increases.
Are we on the right?
Yes.
All right.
Also, you will see also in this report here, right at the bottom, when it talks about race and ethnicity, you will see the increase among whites, and it has been a 10% increase among the whites. And what is being used is the fentanyl mostly, and heroin is also in second place of usage. The next slide, it will tell you about heroin and fentanyl and the increases that are there. One of the things is that there, I think when we heard about fentanyl, it was when Prince died. That brought a lot of attention to the United States because that is what he died, from overdose of fentanyl. Now, there's been a 73% of increase in America for fentanyl, and fentanyl is so strong that it's used to put elephants out. It's 50% more potent than heroin, so that gives you an idea how strong it is. And that's why people like it. In the past, people were cutting the heroin with a lot of things, and it wasn't really effective. So for people to really get the high that they desired, they were using 10 to 20 packs of heroin. With fentanyl, because it's so strong, like I said, it's 50% stronger than heroin, they may use now two to three packs. So that's cheap for them. So a pack is usually, a pill is usually $10. So you're going from spending $100 to $200 to maybe $30. So that is why it's so popular and why it's so widely used. The next slide, we'll go into the deaths of people, and it's a clear slide of telling you from 2007 to 2016, all the synthetic opiates that are being used. And as you can see, fentanyl is number one. Can you imagine, 2007, only 48 were using and died, and now it's 488. So that tells you the increase. Heroin is in second place. 100 died in 2007, and in 2016 it's 399, and oxycodone is the third rated highest. So you can see how an increase has been happening in the last couple of years if you see the progression. This is when these numbers were coming out, and you see in the increase, this is when, from a city to a state at a federal level, people realize this is really an epidemic and we've got to do something to treat it. The next slide goes into, because I know we're interested in what's going on in our own city of Portsmouth. These statistics come from the Virginia Department of Health. What they've been tracking is overdoses in every city in Virginia every month. And as you'll see, they usually do their data based on per 100,000 population. Now, when you look at Portsmouth, you've got to really look at even the other numbers of the other cities who sometimes have two to three times more people than we have, and look how high our numbers are. When they have rated, where the cities rate, a lot of times, Portsmouth have rated between the highest, coming in first place, second or third, because our numbers are so high. That's why this is really an epidemic. So you've really got to compare the population based on the number of people that are dying and having overdoses of the heroin and also fentanyl. This one, the sucking sheet will tell you the overdoses of heroin in the months, and that looks, may look low, and the reason, like I said before, is heroin is not as used as much as the fentanyl. That is the desired drug, but there are still people using it, and you'll see that this can result in death. Treatment addiction is what it is, it's a disorder. We have a challenge here, what to do to treat it. It is affecting our community and our families, it's tearing up the children and families. It is so strong that people want it, it is difficult for us to even get them into treatment. There are people out there that we approach every day, asking them, do they want to come into treatment? They say, no, you know, they're able to get the drugs and they're enjoying it. I just saw one of my ex-client who had lost all her toes because she had diabetes, she wasn't getting any treatment, and I said, what are you getting ready to do? She said, I'm getting ready to go get me some fentanyl. I've got to have it. So people have these, they're not taking care of themselves and they're dying, and it's just hard. And I just had to remind her, we're here to help you when you're ready, and that's all I can do. Because of this epidemic, the state has given us some money. We've gotten a couple of grants. One of our grants, they gave us $113,000 to treat 11 individuals in Portsmouth. What they wanted us to do was track 11 individuals from the beginning to the end, pay for the methadone, if they need any help with housing or food, or they need to go to see a doctor. Those are the kind of things that we're supposed to help them with. So we have already started that, and we're tracking that progress. We also got a grant to hire two peers. Peers are people who themselves have gone through drug or mental health issues, and these people are to go to, if there's an overdose at the hospital, the peers are to go to the hospital, talk to them, and try to convince them to come in and get help. We also got what we call a warm line, they got a phone, we're putting the number out there where people can call and talk to them, and if they feel like they're getting ready to go use and they don't want to, they'll try to go out and see them and talk to them and convince them not to use. One other thing we're doing is, we've already had what we call two revive training. Revive is where we're teaching people how to use Narcon, and so that if you have a family member or friend that's using heroin or fentanyl, that you can apply, know how to use the drug, Narcon, and revive them. So those are the things that we have in place. As you can see, this is an epidemic, it's a problem here, it's a concern. There's an increase among white males and children, and what we're trying to do is link, support, and educate people, and do what we can to bring the Portsmouth family back together. Are there any questions?
What is fentanyl? Does it have a medical purpose?
No. Well, you can get it legally or illegal, but when you get it illegally, it's a synthetic drug, pill. You can get it legal or illegally, but when you get it illegal, it's going to be higher, you know, because they want to get really high. If a doctor prescribed, it's going to be at a low percentage, a dosage, but if they're getting it on the street, it's higher, and that's what's having the effect. So if it was properly used, it can help, but if not, then it can kill, because it is so potent.
The funds that's been given by the state, is any of that money, can it be used to help educate families and communities? Because I know we had an opioid awareness program earlier in the year with the sorority Delta Sigma Theta, and we use a lot of our own resources to educate the public on that. It was a lot of people there, but is any of that funding allocated to help more people?
Yes, it is to increase awareness. I actually am planning now to have another one, not only on opiate awareness, but suicide awareness, because the suicide rate is also high, and so we will be having that for the families and children, and it'll be similar to the way we did the opiate. So I'm hoping it'll be as much of a success as the other.
Yes, the treatment of the opioid addiction, I notice you say it's being treated as a disorder. Are all of the drug addictions being treated as a disorder?
Yes, any substance use, we call a disorder. At our agency, we provide counseling, we have case management, which links and refer. If you, we have money, like if you, because what we find is a lot of people have a lot of primary care issues, like high blood pressure, diabetes, and we have money to help you go get some help with the doctor. We also help with housing. So we're trying to do all, we know you have to, and I think Dr. Patton said it, you've got to have food, you've got to have housing, you've got to have everything to treat a person, and when you don't do that, that leads to unsuccessful. So that's, we want to be successful.
Right. The issue as far as treating it as a disorder, how is that interacting with the criminal process? That when these persons are addicted and criminal behavior attached to it, how is that now coordinated with our police and the whole criminal process?
Well, we work closely with the probation and parole office. We actually do groups at the probation and parole office. We're going back to having quarterly meetings with the probation officers so we can both be on the same page when we're dealing with the people, because their people are our people, we're working with the same people. So what we try to do is most, I think a lot of people have misconception, but a lot of people that are using drugs usually have a lot of theft and those kind of things, robberies and things like that. And so, like I said, in the past, you may have a habit, it can vary, from $100 to $800 a day. So that's a lot of creative thinking of how to obtain that money. So with us helping them to put them on methadone, methadone, if you get on methadone, that's only $45 a week, or if you're in a program, we don't charge you anything. So we're doing those kind of things to counteract the criminal activities, because you'll find that most of them were doing those things to get the drug.
So those persons are part of the criminal process? They've been charged with, what, felonies?
Yeah, we have a large, probably between 80 to 95, it varies, percent of our people that's coming in for substance use have a criminal background.
Right. So then, if it's a disorder, how are they treated then once they are incarcerated, either in the regional jail or in our local jail?
Well, the regional jail, you know, got the, what was it, $900 and some thousand dollars, because that was a factor that we found is, I can't remember the statistics on that, but you have a lot of people in the jail who aren't being treated at all. So with the program that we got, the $900 and some thousand dollars, we got case managers in there, we got therapists in there, and they're doing groups and trying to help them. The goal is, once you're in there, we're trying to prepare you for the come out, and when you come out, our thing is to hook you right up into services, so there's no gap. So you go from, when you leave, one of our case managers escorts you right to our facility, and you're able to get into our program, and then there you can sign up to get whatever services you need. We'll do an assessment, but we also try to work to make sure you have housing and food. We've actually had people put into apartments, we go get their groceries, we've bought them clothes as soon as they get out of the jail. So we're doing those kind of things, and we're getting you ready, we send you to DARS, which will help you with employment. So we're doing all those kind of things in jail and out of jail, so that pattern can stop.
Yeah, I just find it interesting, not only Portsmouth, but the whole country's response to the opioid issue is totally different than the response to the crack cocaine era. That's why I said, I notice it's called a disorder for opioid.
Right.
But for crack cocaine, those folks were locked up and criminalized.
And that's true.
And so I just, that's why I'm curious.
It's been some serious discrepancies against, you know, how much time you get.
So that's my concern, then, what about those in our city who are on crack cocaine and these other, are they getting the same type of attention, the same type of benefits that you just listed out, or are they just locked up in our criminal process?
Well, for us, as our agency, it doesn't matter whether you're on crack or heroin. We were always doing the best we can. Of course, now on crack, they don't have to, the good thing is they don't have to be on methadone, but we can at least put the clinical services there, and the employment services, and the case management services. All of those are for everyone that comes to our facility, so those things are there. Just like you said, there's been a lot of money that's specifically tagged for opiate users, and we have to use them for that, but the other services that we render, it's for everyone that comes in.
Then my last question, you mentioned that the grant that tracks individuals, what's involved with that tracking? As far as, I know they're taking the methadone, but what about if they are starting back on the opiate, is that, how is that tracked?
That's also tracked. We take urines to see if they're staying clean. They're trying to see if by putting these wraparound services in, and there is no charge, trying to make sure any gaps that you had, going back into a drug-infested home, or, because the first thing we tell you, you've got to change people, places, and things. So getting them in a better environment, taking care of the medical issues, we're trying to see, is that really going to make a difference? And that's what we're tracking, all of that. You know, every service that we provide, like you just said, if there is a dirty urine, they want to see the interventions that we're doing, if they're using any other drugs. They want to see, is this going, is this working? So that's the purpose.
Persons have to agree to being a part of this tracking?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They have to agree.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Bill, let's move to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the root cause? Are more people being addicted through the regular medical system, as in prescriptions?
Uh huh. Yes.
And then going the illegal route?
Yes.
Is that the change?
When they showed, even when the DEA had the film that we showed, what they're showing all over the world is that, and that's why we're seeing younger people are using too, because it really showed how the children were going into the parents' medical cabinets and using their drugs, and, you know, putting water where alcohol is, and drinking, and doing all these kind of things. But the increase definitely is synthetic drugs and prescription drugs.
So it's starting out legal in...
And turning to illegal to keep it going.
Illegal activity.
Because they've gotten addicted.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And you're always chasing your high.
Last question. With the 11, you said they gave the funding for 11. How close are we to the 11, and what kind, are you taking referrals? I mean, do you just go out?
Well, when they come in, we ask them, they, one of the things that they restricted, they had to be new admissions, and just like Dr. Whitaker said, they have to agree to it. We had to have 11, I think by next month, and we already have nine, so we know we're going to meet the 11, that's not going to be an issue. And we've assigned it to one therapist so that we can make sure it's consistency, and that person is very good at keeping data, and we know we'll have the data that we need.
As far as that root cause issue, I thought that we have known for years that different populations were using different types of drugs, but now they're dying.
Yes.
And that's what has brought the attention to it. The drug use has been there all the time.
You're absolutely correct. When I came here 30 and some years ago, it's always been a high use. I think with the fentanyl specifically, like I said, it's 50 times more potent than heroin. If you're constantly chasing that high and trying to get higher and higher, and it's not being cut with a lot, that's where the death is coming in. So you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, you're just starting to see the white population is being impacted by this disproportionately, and it's sad to say that it's come down to socioeconomics and race as far as the response to this, because, like I said, we've been knowing for years that these drugs have been available in communities through prescriptions, they've been used, as well as on the crack cocaine side. But this whole response is interesting, how it's being presented. And so my concern is that, are we approaching this addiction issue on an equal basis? That is, are both the issues of crack, as well as the opioid issues, are in the criminal process, as well as from the social behavioral process?
Well, the criminal process is being looked at, as you probably know, but as far as us, we've never discriminated. To us, a client that needs help, and we're going to do all we can from whatever the drug use, even if it's marijuana, I mean, we're going to do what we can to do the wraparound services. The addition of money has made it, we're able to do a little more, but it's specifically for the opiate users, you're correct.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to make two points. The first is, my daughter, who is a child psychiatrist, called to my attention. While we as a nation continue to ask, why are children younger and younger using drugs? She asked me for one week to count every advertisement on TV that talks about a drug and tell you to go ask your doctor for it, and there are hundreds on TV every week. Think about it. Never was there a time when you knew of a drug that you would go in and tell your doctor what drug you need. And so you have parents now who are coming to the child psychiatrists and saying, put my child on this. So we push, we say, what's the problem? But look at our society, who advertising of drugs is constant. Second, we're one of the first cities, and oldest cities in Virginia, the first synthetic treatment drug was methadone.
Methadone, right.
And we have one of the oldest clinics in the state of Virginia.
Yes.
It's over 30 years old, and we still have persons who have been coming to our clinic for over 30 years, every day, for the methadone, and they come from across the region. They're just not Portsmouth citizens, but they come from across the region. And so when we look at, while we created something as a, something to help, the people who are on it can't get off of it. So you've got 30, 40 years of methadone users that have to have it in order to function. And Mrs. Breakway and I, you know, have had a conversation about it, because, you know, I said, well, we aren't getting people off of it, and the issue is, they have to have it, that becomes an addiction, and it's almost cyclical, it continues. But as you know, those grants that she just spoke of, you are approving, the monies are coming in, and we're trying to use them in the best way that we can to address the needs in our city.
Any other questions or problems?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Pamela Littlehill, Director of Social Services, will come forward and share with us some of the humanistic programs that she is providing for all citizens.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Thank you. I'm going to go over tonight some of the services, as Dr. Patton said, provided by the Department of Social Services. In addition, at the end, touch on how the opiate epidemic is affecting social services and the work that we do. As you know, the services provided by Social Services, we try to provide quality services at all times while protecting the health and safety and well-being of our children and families in our community. Next slide, please. A lot of times I write down the services, because there's often a misconception that when people hear social services, social services is coming to take their children. Social services does so much more than that, we really do. So in addition to CPS, foster care, adoption, independent living, and CSA, we do childcare, parenting classes, the Fatherhood Initiative Program, which is a wonderful program for men that is offered every Tuesday evening for single dads and also dads that are families. The men in that program are men that come from all walks of life, they could be from incarceration. We're working with them in a collaborative way in conjunction with child support, because we want parents to pay for their children, support the education and well-being of them. In that class, the men also find leads on finding jobs and employment, as well as understand what is the definition of being a father. What does that mean? What is their role in terms of that? We have adult foster care and guardianship services, adult protective services, community-based care and nursing home placement, as well as companion services for our seniors. Next slide, please. DSS also provides financial assistance through our auxiliary grant programs, general relief, medical assistance program, senior citizens tax relief, our SNAP, which used to be food stamps years ago, temporary assistance to needy family, alternative funds, and TANF also has a further break ground as it relates to diversionary assistance and unemployed Social services... Social services, predominantly, we want to encourage our parents to be independent and self-sufficient. The goal is not to keep people on welfare, so to speak, but to work with them through programs that support their independence. So when we talk about programs like SNAPET and VIEW, those are programs in which we are providing parents with training, how to resume right, find jobs, utilize our computers in the building and actually say, well, how do I navigate through these systems and look up things? Where do I find job leads? An assessment of your skills. What am I good at? What do I need support with? What is my level of education? What opportunities are there that are open for me? So those are the kind of services that are provided in those programs. For last fiscal year, there were over twenty-four thousand people who received the benefits of Medicaid, over twenty-two thousand for SNAP, and twenty-two hundred for TANF.
Is the twenty-two thousand households or individuals?
Thank you.
That's a difference.
That's a big thing. That's a difference. The difference is, the, can we go back to that slide, please? Thank you. When we say for Medicaid and SNAP, this is all in terms of cases. There's a difference with, meaning this, you can have individuals in a family or in one household, and several members of the household may have their own case, which is totally different from you counting just the number of cases in that house as opposed to the number of individuals at that address receiving services. So the counts will be different. Right now, we have a state system called the Virginia Case Management Information System. It is currently being updated with the data because they were doing a migration into something else. And that system is where they actually track. And they just started doing this year, and those are the reports that I'll be providing to Dr. Patton, where it will list specifically out our numbers for Portsmouth as well as any of the other cities. So we actually can see at a glance, and even in annual report, to see how many people received TAP, how many SNAP, TANF, how many were daycare services, how many were unemployed, how many were pregnant, single moms. So they are compiling all of this data. They did it last year for the first time, and it was really good. So now they are looking at this new system to see how this system will populate all the information for all cities. So when we want to see that comparison, how do we do next to our neighboring cities? We can see that at a glance. So right now, they're trying to do that monthly.
So which one represents individuals and which one represents cases?
These numbers here right now are just the cases. It is not for individuals. Because with them migrating over into that system right now, they can't populate it yet. So we couldn't pull it out. So I can only pull just the cases.
If, for example, someone goes on Medicaid for the first month of the fiscal year, and then, for some reason, the second month goes off, and then the eighth month they come back on, is that two cases then?
That system, it can be considered two cases. But if somebody is in one program for one month, and say, like you said, they're in there for six months and then fall off, you have to be careful because sometimes the numbers can be a duplicated count. So they want to make sure in the system, and that's what they're trying to figure out now, how do they extrapolate that data?
Well, that was the purpose of my question. Are we double counting? And counting that as two cases, you're really just dealing with one person, though. And so you have the risk, it appears to me, of having a higher number of cases than you'd have individuals.
Exactly. Sometimes the reports can look higher. But that's what they're fixing in the system now. They do have the system, and they're actually inputting all the data right now. So when they actually run a report and drill down on it, it will tell you exactly how many in this household. And in this household also, it'll separate it and give you an unduplicated count. So that's what they're working on now. So they are, I did ask them, how long will it take before they think we get all these numbers up and ready? They're thinking in the next couple of months. So in about three months, they're thinking that they will be up to speed.
My question is, when, if I apply for Medicaid and I'm approved, I'm not coming off next month. I'm on Medicaid.
Correct.
And I'm going to be on it.
Correct.
So it's not that...
Well, then you SNAP. I mean, it's...
I stay on it. I mean, is that correct?
Unless there's a death.
Unless there's a death.
But let's take SNAP. You get SNAP because of income, right?
Correct.
Okay. Let's say that you qualify for SNAP in the first month. You end up getting employed, and your income changes. And then eight months later, you're laid off, and you requalify for SNAP.
And you can with some of the programs. You can re-qualify.
So you have one individual being counted as two separate cases.
None of you pull the data out of the system monthly? What I might see for this month...
But this is an average, though, of twelve months.
Right. This is an average of what it was for those households for the year. And it was only because probably before they moved things into this system last year, we were able to pull the numbers without getting a duplicated count. But because of the migration that the state is doing in the VA-CMS system, right now, we can't get to it. But they are confident that we should be able to get to it, too. So again, we'll be able to look at what a monthly count is. We'll be able to get a count that is non-duplicated. You can actually see, I'll be able to see and tease out if somebody was on in January, but for whatever reason, didn't need the income or the requirements in later months. So we'll be able to actually drill down in those reports, and that's why they're moving to a new system.
So without that data, you can't, we can't say that a percentage of our population that's receiving some form of assistance, is that correct?
You, there is actually a report that they're working on, and it shows you in graph and percentage what we have for Portsmouth. I think the last report that I got recently was something for August. So that's a report that I can very well pull and provide to Dr. Patton, if you'd like to see.
And what was that percentage for August?
I don't remember right now. I have to know.
Is there a possibility that a person who is on Medicaid may also qualify for TANF? So that's two services.
Two separate things.
It would be counted twice in the system.
Would it be useful?
Not for Medicaid. So in other words, if I'm doing a report on Medicaid, that is different. So the report that might be run is, how many citizens are on Medicaid? It will be a separate number than how many are on TANF. But if you want to know the number of people that are in both programs, I'm not sure that system can see that yet, but I'll find out shortly.
This is a question for my colleagues on council. Would it be useful to ask the city manager to come up with a percentage? The best guess, the percentage of our population that's on Medicaid, SNAP, and TANF? Would that be useful?
Would it be better to wait for the state, since the migration of the data?
But I can check with them as early as tomorrow, just to find out where they are in the process.
I think it'd be useful, if we could get a comparison with our sister cities, if they track that data. I think, Mayor, that would be good. Okay. All right.
I'm pretty sure I can get that. And we may be able to have it in your, by the end of the week, to you.
Exactly. Thank you. Next slide. These are some of the numbers and services that we provided for last fiscal year. There were one hundred and thirty-five children in foster care, and each year, we noticed that that number is going down. Currently, we have ninety-one. And our view, for you participants last year, seven sixty-six. When I say valid CPS calls, it means a lot of calls that come into CPS are not necessarily what we consider value call, calls that we would respond to that are valid complaints or concerns. So that's why I said it's valid. Fatalities not known to CPS. So what that means is, we have cases that are actually opened with CPS, and those are known cases. So say there was a fatality that happened in the city, but if it was not a case that was known to us that we actually had opened, we would say that that's the difference between a case known to us versus not known. We received two hundred and thirty-eight valid APS calls. We serviced one thousand and one citizens. We provided three hundred and seven dollars in bus tickets for support to get to and from work. Rental assistance, we assisted thirteen citizens. Six hundred and five for referrals for other supporting, support needs for citizens. So we will partner with different agencies, and depending on assessment what your needs are, we'll do a collaboration. So through a referral process, six hundred and five citizens were served. Thanksgiving baskets, we did four hundred and fourteen. Fifty-one families sponsored for Christmas. And I'm going to say that's just in DSS because we also partnered with a wonderful church who assisted us in providing a tremendous amount of toys and things for the children of Hodges Manor Elementary. And we were able to, they gave us their own angel tree lesson. We assisted them there. Finalized adoptions were three last year. Currently, there are seventeen finalized adoptions, eight that are pending adoptions. And we have, again, like I said, ninety-one children in care altogether. So sometimes when we talk about even children being in placement or who are in care, they're not necessarily all in foster families. Sometimes the children are placed with other known family members. So it can be an aunt or uncle, but technically, they are still considered in placement. Childcare services provided, thirty-nine hundred. Fatalities known to CPS, zero. Adult services, a hundred and fifty-two. Infants exposed to substance abuse, we had twenty for Portsmouth. So far, for this fiscal year, we have one.
Does that mean born that way, or...
I'm sorry.
Does that mean they're born that way, or...
It meant that, no. Well, yes, yes. It was a parent that was on substance abuse, and the child was born drunk. Positive tox. Again, I want to piggyback off Elaine when it comes to that, and we'll talk about it a little bit more. But we are watching amongst Portsmouth and the other regions, this rise. So right now, I'm steadily keeping count. Like I said, we have one so far, but it definitely is an epidemic. Screenings for home care that was done at Social Services, four hundred and fourteen. Citizens assisted in tax preparation, ninety-six. Utility assistance, twenty-eight. Twenty-six graduates from the parenting class. A hundred and seven baskets given out to citizens for food, and back-to-school backpacks, forty-three. So when the Commissioner, Dr. Mercer Levine, declared an opiate epidemic, like Elaine said, the rise at one point in two thousand and seventeen was five hundred and fifteen deaths, and by two thousand and sixteen, it was over eleven hundred. So DSS has received this year twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars to provide for assistance for children born positive tox. So I'm going to tell you what some of those services are that we'd be providing this year. So the monies that we receive can be utilized for substance abuse testing, substance abuse evaluations, assessments, diagnosis, and treatment, development or treatment goals and strategies, including support plans or safe care for infants exposed to substances during pregnancy, substance abuse counseling and treatment, pharmacological services, medical and remedial services to attain and maintain a favorable condition of health that are not covered through Medicaid, substance abuse residential treatment, infant and child stimulation services that address both cognitive and the development of motor skills, transportation services to and from needed community resources and facilities. And that was for child welfare substance abuse services. The supplemental services are TB tests, psychological evaluations, meals while transporting children, car seats slash cribs for children, intervention, socialization, and recreation, education, and rehab services, child protective services related to emergency needs, counseling, and treatment services, prevention services, child developmental delay services for physical, intellectual, or developmental disabled deaf and blind children. And last, transportation services to and from needed community resources and facilities. So they will give us an array of services that we can provide support people to. Next slide, please. And I think that's it.
Other questions?
How are we doing on employees? I know that, or anecdotally, that you were looking for more caseworkers a week.
We are definitely an improvement from last year. I think when I came on, we had a tremendous amount of vacancies. That number is cut in half, so went to ninety to about fifty-something at that time. Right now, our vacancies are up again, but we are, we have posted, we've provided HR with all the positions that we're hiring for. HR was wonderful in giving new supervisors training on how we're doing hiring right now and what that process will be throughout the city. So again, that we can try to expedite positions here. One of the things that we are noticing within Social Services is different social services agencies, just bottom line, have a tendency to swap staff. It has come up in our regional meetings. The goal of all social services in all cities is to get qualified, competent people to provide the services that we need. So we are going to be having some talks coming up in the very near future, and how do we address that? Because it's not about jumping from city to city. We're looking for dedicated, knowledgeable people to help provide these services. So that's something that actually the Director in Virginia Beach recommend that we get into a discussion on, and we will be meeting with our regional director soon.
On the service program update, I see the childcare services is the largest number, three thousand, nine hundred and five. And I know that people want to take advantage of that with the cost of childcare, you know, that people have to pay, but how, the ratios? So everyone who is on services takes advantage of childcare services, or...
Not necessarily.
That's what I want to know.
No, not necessarily. It's looking, again, for people who can get back to work, or there might be other needs that are going on in that family. What we want to do with programs like VIEW and SNAPET, excuse me, is to get people back to work. One of the barriers that we've found is childcare. Another barrier we've found is transportation, and not necessarily cars, but in terms of, how do I get from my neighborhood if I have a limited number of bus routes from here to there? And what does that look like for me? So when I have to get, you are looking for me to go to work and be independent, but if my commute requires me to get the child in the car, get you to the babysitter, well, on the bus, get you to the babysitter, wait, get back on the bus, get you to employment, come back. People start looking at the dollars and saying, what is the cost? And is it even feasible? Thank you, Dr. Patton. Oh, thank you. Is it even feasible for me to go to work?
Yes.
So we're trying to make sure that when we work with people in terms of employment, that we're trying to provide them or link them to opportunities that give more than the base pay. So that they have meaningful employment. Because you're just making minimum wage, it's going to be a wash or even cost you more. So it is something that we've looked at. I do have vendors or different people this year, which is interesting enough, actually contacting Social Services, saying, hey, we have these job opportunities here. Do you know people? Anytime I get the word, we get the word out. Whether it be in the father, the mentoring program, whether it be in the parenting classes, whether it be the businesses that I've actually already met within the agency, and I said, well, if you let me know, I'll put it on our message board, and we'll let people know to send their resumes down to you and what time should they come and where. So it is really a push for us this year to try to get as many people employed and self-sufficient as possible.
Because we employ a lot of people from this community, and the one issue we run into with a lot of females who want to work is childcare. I don't have nobody to keep my baby, and I want to work.
They want to work, but who's going to watch my child? Especially if you also come from a single-family home, and you don't have a lot of natural supports around you. Thank you.
Dr. Patton?
Mayor, one of the things I'd like to point out is that our children served in foster care at this present is at ninety-one. That's significant. And Mrs. Littlehill, in her tenure here, has really been working hard with her team to try to keep that number, place the kids back with families that can take them back after they have been taken out of the family for some reason. And I remember the days when our foster care was up in the hundreds, and we're talking thirty years ago. So this is significant that we, and it's been lower than that.
Right. We even have a training with the state now that the Chief of Family Services is going to tomorrow and Friday to, again, discuss other ways we can expedite adoptions. One of the plans that they incorporated for this year, and you might have heard about it, was the Family Match Program. The state has been really supportive in trying to help Region Five move these children along into permanency. So the Family Match Program, long story short, is, if you think of match.com, these are actually the same vendors that have partnered with the state. the same vendors that have partnered with the state in matching children to families. So the goal is, it really doesn't matter, the family member doesn't have to be from Portsmouth, what's important is that the child has a permanent home where people will let them. So the goal of this Family Match Program is that you can actually go online in the system, and anywhere you can find a match, it could be a parent in Northern Virginia or another state, who keys into the system, what you're looking for, the type of home you have, the kind of child that most likely you'd be able to work with successfully, but you also get the perspective from the child, and what are your likes, what your dislikes, what your needs are, what your behaviors are. And it's utilizing the system to try to do a match. So the state has been great with helping us do that, and we've been moving these children along in the last couple of months very quickly, and also, I give a lot of thanks to our Attorney's Office for help when we have questions and advice about things.
Yes, sir.
So from a policy standpoint, as far as council being legislative body, passing ordinances, what is it, and you don't have to answer tonight, but what is it that council needs to be passing to address these issues?
To address?
Because if we just continue to just get reports on numbers, but we're not passing any policies to address those issues, then it just becomes a report.
I think some of the key things that council is already working on is economic development. Because believe it or not, people having jobs and places to go to, to work that really want to work, will make a huge difference. I have parents that are saying, I want to work, but I don't have the opportunities here. Taking a look at our bus routes and transportation might also be a help, so that we have more bus routes, so that parents can navigate in our system from getting A to B, because it's expensive to take cabs and Uber when you have a limited amount of money. But you have a lot of people who are more than willing to take public transportation if they can access it, some things like that. Believe it or not, those are two of the biggest things. One of the great things about our civic system that we currently have, I get a lot of emails, believe it or not, they are on a regular, oh, I do know, don't you? I get a lot of emails from citizens, but a lot of them are related to, how can I be a foster parent? We get so many that are looking to help and assist these children, and it's great. I don't know about the other cities, but Portsmouth has a lot of families that want to pitch in and help, because I get their emails. When I usually, monthly, I can't even tell you how many I get a month. So what we do is we get them, we train them, there's trainings that they have to do, and we make that match. Matter of fact, when I came in this morning, I got a voice message from a parent that thanks DSS for the support that they got in helping them adopt this child, and it was so quick, and they just felt like all their questions were answered, and it was pretty much smooth without incidents. So those are the kind of phone calls that I like to keep getting. But thing, you've already been helping in terms of approving different budgetary items that we have as it relates to services. Obviously, like anybody else, we are still looking at state government and seeing cuts and things, and how that's going to affect our world, just like behavioral health or anything else. But the more money we can get in and do as much as we can, that's really what we're trying to do. Every dollar we get counts, so your support in adopting those funds, like, oh, I'm going to have tonight, those help greatly.
So Social Services working with, because when you said jobs, is Social Services working with the poverty task force?
Everybody's working with the task force.
Because we bringing in jobs, but if they're low-income, minimum-wage jobs, and we're back in the same boat.
I agree.
So when we say economic development, if it's just bringing jobs where businesses get some type of incentive to hire persons that are low-income, but yet they're getting minimum wage, then they still stay in the same. So when I said policies, that's why I say you don't have to try to answer tonight.
Answer to it, yeah.
I think that's some serious thought, because if we're not passing policies that will help to move people out of their situations, then we're just going to keep getting these similar reports.
So we'll look into that, but one of the other good things is, is we get partnerships from TCC and ODU, looking to do trainings, because like with Opportunity Inc., because I sit on their board as well, we're looking to train people to meet the need of the job demands that are coming out now. So, and now partnering with other schools, they are looking to gain referrals and to train citizens and people on these jobs that are going to pay above minimum wage. That's what we're trying to do. So whether it be if they try to offer the classes at DSS, because DSS also provides funding. We can provide funding to work with people in getting back into school, whether it be for textbooks, uniforms, that actual whole training program that's offered at TCC or ODU, we assist as much as we can, so those funds that we get from the government really help us do that.
Okay. Following up on your answer to Dr. Whitaker's question about what can we do, and you mentioned transportation. We have a regional transportation district, Hampton Roads Regional Transit, HRT, as you know. They're saddled with some legacy routes that they inherited from long ago that may not be relevant today. The bus is there, but the people's not there. Is there a way that we could get not only our Social Services Director, but the Social Services Directors within the footprint that's covered by HRT, to meet with the route planners of HRT, to make sure that the public transit that we're providing makes sense?
I have a pretty close relationship with the other DSS Directors.
If the job is there, but you can't get the work, that's a big issue.
You're right.
That is something, Mayor, that we could call, I'd share it with you, we're going to be meeting with Mr. Harold, the City Managers of the seven cities. And we, I could definitely bring that to his attention, because there has not been a connection that I know of. I know Mr. Baldwin and I have talked about the routes and the study that he has done, but to actually deal with our Social Services and those persons who really use our buses, I think that's a missing gap. So I think that's a very good.
Excuse me, I think it would be a very good and meaningful conversation if you and your counterparts could get together with those experts at HRT.
And I will actually email, send an email out to Mr. Harold tomorrow, and copy the other city managers.
One last question. Are there any partnerships with, like, TCC for them to maybe perhaps get more education? Because what we're finding is that a lot of them, you know, have, this is their first jobs, and we do hire at above minimum wage, way above minimum wage, that's why we get a lot of the employees. But if their educational levels were higher, they could probably go someplace else and earn more money, because when they make the income that they make, and then they have to get bus passes, and then they have to pay for their own food, and they don't qualify for TANF, and they can't get SNAP, then therein lies the poverty again, because the income that they're earning doesn't match up with what they're able to earn because of their educational levels.
I actually had a meeting with one of the representatives at TCC not that long ago, a few months ago, and he actually provided me with the whole curriculum of things that they are offering, and courses, and support for DSS. In addition to, they are doing a Weldon program, and then that helped us partner and get people trained to get employment within the shipyards. So I've asked them to come over to DSS every once a month. I have as many community vendors who like to tell us what kind of services that they have, and how we can best utilize and get that information out to our citizens. I actually have them come, and I believe it's the fourth Wednesday of the month. So somebody like TCC, actually, he's on the agenda. And they actually come, and they tell us the services that they have, and it's with all supervisory staff, so that we can get that information down on our staff. It helps us with the resources and everything else. So that was something we started last year, and it's been working, because we get a lot of calls, when's the next supervisor's meeting, can we get on the agenda?
Yes.
You're coming.
Thank you.
Good.
And Mayor, as we're talking about, this is coming, we had that brief meeting with Captain Brown and his assistant, and they called to our attention the October fourteenth. They have fifteen hundred jobs, and this clearly says that we will be hiring on the spot, but these are the things that you must bring. So we're sharing this with schools, we're sharing it everywhere, and you'll make an announcement this evening, because this is right in our back door, and the jobs are right there, and they are hiring people for many different areas. She's finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to a discussion on the monument, and I'll start the discussion. At the last council meeting, we directed the city attorney to take action to file two declaratory judgments. One is asking the court to determine who owns the monument and the land that it sits on, and the second question is the applicability of Section fifteen point two dash eighteen twelve to our monument here in Portsmouth. After we took that action, we, and it was a four-three consensus, asked the city attorney to draft a resolution for our consideration, bringing that back on this council meeting. And he's got that draft, so I think we need to talk about the draft. But there are some other things that have happened in the last two weeks. A judge in Charlottesville has ruled on what that particular judge thinks is the applicability. And maybe we could start the conversation by asking the city attorney to brief us on what he knows about that particular opinion.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as the mayor stated, at the conclusion of last week, a Charlottesville judge did render an opinion with regard to the matters facing Charlottesville. He separated two issues, one asking the parties to go back and come back and respond with regard to the effect of the Robert E. Lee statute in the city of Charlottesville. He also spoke to his opinion as it relates to the intent of the original statute that was filed in nineteen oh four. I will certainly can provide you all that opinion. I will simply say, for public consumption, his rationale was extremely brief and rather curt in terms of his response. The expectation is that that opinion will get appealed, and I think that's why the judge offered an opportunity for folks to resubmit some particular documents, in the expectation that that matter might go up. But that was at the conclusion of last week, and I can certainly share that opinion with you all if you have not received your own comment.
Any questions on that? We have the draft resolution.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm still not clear how, based on what you just explained, how the Charlottesville issue has any relevance to Portsmouth. You mentioned that the judge ruled on the effect of the monument. What do you mean, what do you mean by that?
The judge ruled that he believes that the fifteen point two eighteen twelve does impact, where Danville said it only worked prospectively, this judge says it in fact goes retrospectively.
Right, I was clear on that point, that you made two points. You said the judge ruled on the effect of the monument, that the parties have to come back, and on fifteen point.
His question was whether or not.
It qualified as a.
They had pleaded sufficiently to place this particular monument within the gambit of what was the scope of the statute.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure, because I thought the question was whether that statute is a war memorial.
It was. That was the question, to see if it fell in that scope. So he asked for them to come back and either revamp their pleading or provide some additional detail.
Right, so then my second question is, I'm still not clear on how the ruling in Charlottesville stating that the fifteen point two eighteen twelve is retroactive to localities, back to nineteen oh four. How would that impact our issue? That's what I, I don't understand what the legal question is there, this impacting Portsmouth.
It's the same question. The question would be answered by, the issue will be whether or not fifteen point two eighteen twelve applies retroactively or just prospectively.
Right, but I thought the judge was talking about the language that was added in nineteen ninety-seven, whether that should be applied retroactively to localities, not the entire statute fifteen point two eighteen twelve. I thought he was speaking to the nineteen ninety-seven amendment language that included localities.
Where the cities.
That certainly, if you're talking about it, that will be an issue that will have to be clarified with regard to the appeal, because the way it's been posited thus far in Charlottesville is that opens the question. We have a sort of dueling opinions with regard to Danville and Charlottesville.
Yeah, well, like I said, the question in Danville deals with the nineteen, and Charlotte deals with the nineteen ninety-seven amendment. It doesn't deal with the statute as a whole. That's why I'm saying, I'm not clear on the legal question we're trying to get satisfied, because if what you're saying, then, what's before the Supreme Court would have to overturn one hundred, over one hundred years of Supreme Court rulings, that statutes are interpreted prospectively.
And Dr. Whitaker, all I can tell you is that Charlottesville will give the Supreme Court, Virginia Supreme Court, an opportunity to speak on that issue if they choose to.
That's where I'm not agreeing, because I thought that the Danville case dealt with the nineteen ninety-seven language, and the Charlottesville case deals with nineteen ninety-seven, not with the entire statute itself. Not with whether fifteen point two eighteen twelve applies before nineteen oh four.
Not before nineteen oh four.
Right, that's.
At nineteen oh four.
Well, if it.
Correct.
Applies at nineteen oh four.
Correct.
And our statute was built in eighteen ninety-three, that's why I say, I don't understand what the legal question is.
Because prospective, if you say retrospective, it doesn't necessarily say retrospective back to a particular date. It still would require an interpretation.
Okay, that's, I'm not clear.
Each and every, what I will say in public, is each and every municipality, and every time these issues come up, there are some elements that may be slightly different between one court and another.
I agree.
And so what you do is you glean a number of bits of information and analysis each time this issue comes forward. You can't necessarily say that the Charlottesville opinion is identical to what will happen in Portsmouth. You cannot necessarily say Danville will be exactly, but you can say there are some common issues that are going to be applied. And what we're trying to do is utilize our particular circumstances to have this particular issue addressed. But you would like to say it would give you some insight, but having done litigation for a number of years, I call it a worm. Today, it'll turn your direction, tomorrow it'll turn, until you get to that conclusion.
And it's safe to say that we have two courts that are circuit courts, one's ruled one way, and one's ruled the other. And we're going to seek a declaratory judgment to see what this circuit court says about the applicability of that section of the code to our monument.
That's correct.
Okay, because I don't know about you all, but people stop me and say, well, you see the Charlottesville case, you can't move it. Well, I thought we need to have a public discussion on that. Again, I haven't seen the judges' ruling, I've read about it, it seems interesting. The resolution is in draft, and I recommend that we have a public hearing on this, and let me tell you why. I think it's really important for us to have a process that is transparent and that allows for public input. And we have not had, although we have had a good number of speakers, both ever since we put this on the table to discuss, they've been primarily non-agenda speakers. we put this on the table to discuss, they've been primarily non-agenda speakers. Now we have a vehicle for a public hearing. And I think it's so important that we have a special meeting of council before the next meeting, in a special, a different venue, where we invite the public. And when I say public, I'm talking about the residents of Portsmouth. Either you have to live here, or have a business here, or own property to speak. And that we do it at a high school auditorium. And we use a technique that the city of Fredericksburg used on a public hearing on whether or not they should move the auction block, which is really a stone that sits at an intersection at downtown Fredericksburg. They had a similar public hearing during the month of August, in which they actually turned the lectern around facing the audience, and the city councils sat on the first row. It would be a very measured public hearing in the sense that we would adhere to strict rules of decorum. But if we just limited it to people who either live in Portsmouth or have a business in Portsmouth, hopefully we would eliminate the groups who want maybe to cause mischief in Portsmouth, who don't live here. Now, if you don't agree with a special meeting, then at the very least, then let's have a public hearing on this matter at our next council meeting on October 24th. And so I'm recommending that we consider either a public hearing one week from tonight at a venue that we'll ask the city clerk to get, that we have it on this resolution. We limit the discussion to people who either live in Portsmouth or have a business, and give them a chance officially to weigh in on the resolution. If there's not a consensus to do that, then I ask you to consider putting this matter on a public hearing for the next council meeting on October 24th. I think the process is really important, and I think that we need to get this done this month. So with that, I recognize Nate.
With this, I'm not for having a public hearing for that, for several reasons. One, even though you're talking about trying to limit it to citizens and business people, if it is a public hearing, then that's open to the public. And whether or not they're allowed to speak, we could invite various groups to come to this, and I think it would be an undue, unnecessary risk to the citizens of Portsmouth. And just considering the staffing levels of both our police and fire department, I don't think that we want to attract the potential trouble that could come with this. If we wanted to get the views of the citizens, I think we should go back to some of the citizens, as I already said, and go for a referendum. They could vote for it. And that way, I think we would get a real number of people, then, you know, possibility of who may show up or may not, because the public hearing, I don't think legally we could limit it just to our people. It's just like when we have the public hearings on zoning issues, we hear from people from outside of the city and other places. So I think that we would be putting ourselves in a bad position to invite some groups that we would, me personally, would prefer not to have coming to the city. So I'm not in favor of having a public hearing on this issue.
And I'm going to give everybody a chance, but let me just respond. It's our public hearing. It's not the same as a budget public hearing or a zoning public hearing. We can decide who gets a chance to speak and who doesn't. And localities in Virginia have done just that in the past. But again, this is a public hearing that's not governed by any state statute that deals with public hearings like a zoning matter. So we get a chance to decide when it is and what the ground rules are. But I appreciate your concerns. Bill?
I'm opposed to a public hearing for some of the same reasons. But I think if you want honest public opinion, I think a referendum is the way to go. I think a public hearing is not going to change anybody's mind sitting at this table from what we would hear at a public hearing. And I think there are problems associated with it. I think a public hearing at this point is just political cover for council to come back after whatever decision we make and say, well, we had a public hearing on it. You had input. We know the same people are going to show up at a public hearing, and probably some additional people, as Councilman Clark said, that we probably don't want to hear from on both sides of the issue that are very passionate about it. I think the people don't want to see a 4-3 vote from this council. I think that's a very divisive signal that we're putting out in the community. I feel that anything this controversial needs to be on the ballot, so at the end of the day, we can honestly say that this is the way our city voted. And I think that's the way to go about it, so we're not tied up. The city's got some important issues, and we're, the staff has been spending time on this, our city attorney is spending time on this, this council is spending time on this, and we've got some major issues. To me, that Confederate monument is not a major issue. That is not insulting to anybody. I pass it quite often. I never hear any of those people on that monument say anything, good or bad. It's to honor the dead. We're among the living, thank the Lord, and people put us here to correct the problems of this city. The monument, and I concede, some people view it negatively for, in their minds, some valid reasons. So let's get it out of the arena of splitting the city, and let's put it on the ballot and decide it in that manner. But I'm opposed to a public hearing.
All right, there are two. What's your feeling on a public hearing?
You know, here, I talked to you this morning about a public hearing. I always liked the idea of hearing from the public. However, in this particular case, as I think about the public safety aspect of it, I think we're inviting trouble. If we go have a special meeting, unfortunately, our citizens know how to behave, but I'm afraid others who are more radical on both sides of the issue will come and have mischief, as you said.
All right.
You know, I'm all for a referendum. I can't imagine anything anybody's going to say to any of the seven of us, as hard-headed as the seven of us are, that's going to change our opinions at this point, frankly. I think this is a divisive issue that people are passionate about, and I think it deserves a vote more than from the seven of us, frankly. I would support a referendum.
I would be in support of a special meeting or a public hearing for the same reasons that everyone, we want to hear what the citizens would have to say. But I would, you know, want to make sure that there wouldn't be anybody who would come in. I mean, even though they wouldn't speak, they could come in and hold signs or, you know, do other things, you know. So I would be in favor of a public hearing, but I would have some concerns about what other people who are not invited to speak. We can't say, you can't come. Are we checking IDs at the door? You know, so.
Let's start this end, Dr. Whitaker. On the question about a public hearing.
I don't understand why you are raising a public hearing issue, because we've been discussing the issue since 2015, I know as a more recent time. So persons have had over a two-year period to express their opinion on this matter. You have already publicly announced that there are four votes to move it. And so I don't see the necessity of having a public hearing when we already have said there are four votes up here to
So you're not for a public hearing?
I'm not finished. Moral leadership is tough. When that monument was built, it's interesting now that you are talking about a referendum and hearing what the city wants to do. And it's interesting how you keep speaking of divisive and split, as if there was a time period when this city was together. And I don't think, when that monument was built, I don't think African-Americans had any sway on that council when those private groups raised the funds and when that council decided to allow it to be built. And so if it's the council that made the decision to do it, it ought to be the council that's going to correct it. We represent the city. I've heard the arguments from the different citizens. I disagree. That's a racist monument, and it is also treasonous. And so I don't see what there is to discuss. I think you're just delaying it, actually. I think it's a delay tactic. I told you that before. Even with the language in the draft, there's too much ambiguity even within that language. And so I'm not in agreement with a public hearing. And also, I would like to have more conversation. I thought we were going to discuss the draft.
We are.
If the draft is on the agenda tonight, I believe it's going to give the public an opportunity to discuss it. And I'm not in favor, because I don't see what someone is going to say. This thing is at a legal point now. I don't see what someone's going to say. I agree. Three up here want the monument to stay, four don't. I don't know where you're going to stand, Mayor, because first you said you wanted it to stay during the mayoral race. And I don't know if we're doing what's politically correct at this time, and it looks appeasing to a certain group, because even with this draft, I have a lot of issues with even how that would be binding. And so I'm totally in disagreement with a public hearing, because we've already heard from the public.
All right. My count is that there are four. The majority of council do not want a public hearing. So let's look at the draft. Okay? Does everybody have the draft before you?
No.
Need a copy. Can you get it out? Can you make a copy?
It's not in the box, is it?
Does the public have a copy of it?
See you.
We have somebody make the copy, and what we'll do, we'll park this for the discussion. And let's go to the city manager's report, and we'll reserve the balance of the time in this work session to talk about the draft.
Okay. All right. Do you want me to go?
Yes.
I will begin my city manager's report with providing some background on the public hearing on the city's parking regulation code amendments. On July 7, 2015, the planning commission adopted a resolution allowing the planning department to begin a review and prepare possible code amendments to the city's parking regulations. A detailed assessment was commenced in 2016, including consultant assistance from a firm, BHB. In 2017, at the city council retreat, city council identified their desire to eliminate the D2 form base code from the current zoning ordinance. On February 16, 2017, the city council and planning commission conducted a joint work session in which city council's desire to eliminate the D2 form base code and rewrite the city's zoning ordinance was discussed. The so-called D2 patch was discussed and has since been adopted by the city council. It is noted, at that time, the work was already underway regarding the parking and signage regulations, which would be brought forward prior to the completion of the zoning ordinance rewrite, which is scheduled for next year. On July 10, 2017, the city council and planning commission conducted a second joint work session and received a follow-up briefing on the parking regulations revision efforts, as well as the ongoing work on the sign regulations. Tonight, you will have the public hearing on the proposed new parking regulations, which also includes the ongoing process to eliminate the D2 form base code. I'm going to ask Mr. Baldwin to come forward, and our planning director will give out just a few comments on the parking regulation amendment that's before you tonight. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor Rowe. Vice Mayor, Chair, members of council will be briefed. This is an issue that council has been, has discussed on a couple of occasions. Just want to point out, this all really dates back to the 2010 adoption of new zoning ordinance, which throughout the old parking requirements imported new ones. And almost immediately, we started having issues related to parking for different projects. These issues came up both during people trying to get zoning clearances, it also came up during our site plan review process. And so there are, while there's a number of issues out there, the number, sort of the four top issues that were coming up are issues related to our minimum parking requirements, where we were seeing the requirements being too great for what sites would typically be able to handle. We had maximum parking standards in there, which for blocking projects, they would hit a code-imposed ceiling. And a number of corporations and projects were stopped as they needed more parking, and our code precluded that. There was also a prohibition, kind of an unusual thing in our zoning code, would not allow anyone to request a variance. So there's really no process for anyone to request any relief, it's pretty much administrative block in place. And also, back to the discussion about the D1 and D2 districts, you know, when the 2010 code was adopted, there's the primary zoning ordinance, there are two appendices, the D1 and D2 downtown districts, each one of those having their own separate parking standards in it. So the goal of all this is to correct many of these technical deficiencies, integrate all the parking back into one ordinance, instead of having it be in three places, create a process or processes in which projects can request some relief if they need it, primarily for some design issues they run into, which quite frankly can happen dealing with stormwater or driveway locations and landscaping. And as, just to follow up, this did go through the planning commission public hearing process, you know, back in September. And now tonight before you will be three, there's really three separate pieces which you'll have before you, which is the way it was provided, the staff material. Number one is creating that special exception process to allow projects to request some relief, again, primarily on design-related issues. There's the process in there which we are going to revamp, the parking standards in terms of parking requirements, how much parking per different uses, as you know, in the zoning code, we have a whole list of uses in there, trying to get those correct. We're also eliminating the maximum cap. Final thing in there is that D1, D2 pullback, where those sections of the code roll back into the main zoning ordinance, so we'd have all of that in one place. And just a final statement, just keep in mind, if this is adopted by city council, it will roll back into our zoning ordinance rewrite project. So as we go through and revamp the D2 district, for example, others, we may go back and have to tweak the parking again next year. But this is a pretty extensive effort to go through this in a lot of detail. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So this is really more than just a patch?
This is a complete rewrite of the parking standards.
Does everybody understand and feel comfortable?
If I could make one last comment, I would like, Dr. Whitaker could ask us, at the last work session, we discussed about the impact on religious institutions. And as we promised, we went back and we looked at the proposed change in relation to some site plans, some projects. We did reach a conclusion that what had been proposed would have increased the parking requirement, so we jettisoned that out and have gone back to what's in the current code, which is a lower parking requirement. So just want to make sure where we did go back as we promised and did that check.
So it's going to, for religious institutions?
No change.
Based on what's the number of seats?
One parking space per six seats.
Yes.
Lower standards. Just want to address that question, since we had said we would do that.
Thank you.
All right. This takes two readings, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And so for tonight, I'll ask the clerk to read the caption, and then call on you, Dr. Patton, and if you want to bring Dr.
Right.
And then we'll open it up for public comments.
Okay. May I do you want me to run through the other part?
Please.
We have five city manager reports before you tonight. One is an ordinance accepting emergency food and shelter national grant program in the amount of $12,135 to be used by the Department of Social Service to assist citizens with emergency shelter and utility needs. The next is a maritime program sustaining and capability enhancement project. It's $92,360 from the Department of Homeland Security. Funds will be used by the police department for port security, including repairs and upgrades to the safe boat. The next is an ordinance accepting 1,400 of funding received from Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services, and appropriate said into the Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund. And this amount will be used to acquire a prevention data license in furtherance of the efforts to address opioid abuse. And we have before you a treasury loan from the Commonwealth of Virginia, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a loan agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia for a loan of $3,400,000 to cover the loss of personal property tax revenue resulting from the terms of certain amended and restated deed and facilities lease agreement entered into on September 21, 2016 by the Virginia Port Authority and the Virginia International Gateway Corporation. And lastly, adoption of a resolution approving an issuance by the Portsmouth adoption of a resolution approving and issuance by the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority of its revenue bonds for the acquisition and renovation of a portion of Dale Holmes Apartments Housing Facility located in the city of Portsmouth. Those are the five.
All right. Any questions?
Was there, and I'm thinking back to the last work session, what was, I think it was Councilwoman Simmons that asked for some information. You were going to get back with us on the retirees?
Yes. Mr. Moody, I, as I indicated, am formalizing that information and looking at how we can address that as we continue to work. And we've already started working on the 2019 budget. And so, we're going to be coming back, actually, starting the first week in November with such information. I have a chart that I can provide the information to you, but it is not something of which we have looked in our budget to see how we can address it at this time. But we're looking at it as it relates to 2019 and recommendation.
Yeah, because I know the, and I think everybody got the same copy, the retirees, which I think was 597 of them, were asking for $500 stipend for each of the retirees. I believe you said that may have to include the ones that retired on disability, even though they didn't obtain 20 years of service. But they've, give all of us a request that would be effective for December 2017. That's been going on a while. You know, we talked about moral high ground. I think, instead of kicking the can down the road, I think we need to make a decision on what we're going to do as a council, so we can get on to other issues.
I think we were, I think my request was, what have we done? Because I know we-
Right.
There was a, I think I recall, there was a payment in January or February of 17, which was in the previous year's budget. And then, there was a $500-
July 1.
On July 1 in this budget year.
This year, yes.
Which was sort of in lieu of the half of the increase that was given to the active employees, which was actually more money than what would have been that half of that percentage that active employees did.
Mayor-
This $500 that they asked for was about active employee's bonus. So, but then we talked about those that made less than a certain amount of money, those with more service than others, and that's what I'm looking for.
I have a chart, which I could get, that, and I've met with Mr. Moody on it, that shows, as requested, the number of employees with 20 years of service or more, which included the disability, the number of employees with 30 years of service or more. And then, Mr. Moody asked that we would look at, and that was just Mr. Moody, I mean, just his inquiry, look at what it would require if we looked at all of the employees that are retired and an amount of approximately 250, 300, and 500.
Well, you know, part of that goes back to, there was about a 10-year period where the retirees got 50% of what the COLA was for city employees, and we did away with that. So, you know, we're talking about trying to lift the boat for people that are struggling financially. And I think this is an opportunity to do that. And they've certainly given their all for our city. And I think it's something we need to either decide yea or nay, and keep, you know, we keep hearing from them, they keep writing, and we keep being very vague about what we're going to do.
Okay. Is this a either/or? Is this a discussion that would be more appropriate to have at budget time when we're looking at all the needs of the city?
Mayor and vice mayor, members of city council, we just received, and I think it was, I just returned back today, and we just received information on a retirement audit. Am I correct?
Actuary.
Actuary. Actuary results, which are information brought to my attention today, which needs to be all-inclusive of this, of a decision of retirement and whether or not there is going to be, we're calling a supplement, we don't use the word budget. It's, I think it's a bigger picture than just a discussion to say, because it impacts retirement on a broad scale for the city. And I think it's-
And can we count on that discussion in November?
You can have the discussion. We could have, yeah, I just, that's what I was saying. We're ready. We're just getting new information on actuaries.
Well, can we, can we get the information necessary to make a-
We shall.
A decision. And along with that, I would like to see a recommendation, because it is a fact that we did away with the 50% COLA, which was in place for 10 years or more.
Can we get it at the next work session?
The actuary is presenting the report, which goes first to the retirement board next week.
All right. Well, we should question Dr. Witter.
Can we get this at the next work session, what was being requested?
Which would be the 23rd.
23rd is your interview. So it would be, we could give you some update on the 24th, but it would not, I mean, it would be the total recommendation.
Is it in November?
November.
November. I would say the first meeting in November. That would be more than, and we would be-
Say when we can do it and do it.
We would be discussing the budget. Right. Thank you.
All right. Let's agree the first Monday council meeting in November.
Right. We'll be bringing back.
Just to get clarity, before council, I want to make sure I'm understanding this retirement request, because before, there was a step down that we had discussed with the retirees. Remember this agreement that was made with a previous administration that the retirees would get a certain amount, and then we discussed-
The HRA.
That was HRA.
That was a diff-
That's different. That's $1,400.
Right. Okay.
That are, that's in place.
This is a-
Totally different.
But they got that, what you're talking about.
They got that. And $500.
Plus the two other payments this year. Two payments this calendar year.
But-
Okay. And one this fiscal year, and two this calendar year, and the $1,400. Cannot be included, so that we see the total picture. Cannot be included with the total.
If that is a request, we'll include, yeah, we'll include that. All right.
I think in the HRA, you got to keep in mind, and certainly Dr. Patton remembers this, probably more so Mayor Rowe, that in return, that HRA money was to get the retirees out of the healthcare plan of the city, which in turn lessened the city's liability substantially, and in return, gave the retirees some money to offset the additional cost. Am I stating that right?
Well, it also came out of the savings. So it came out of money already appropriated. Now, this is, this request tonight, the way I understand it, is brand-new money, which would have to be appropriated.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with-
Sure.
This has nothing to do with HRA.
Which is totally different. This is, yeah. All right. So we got it scheduled for the first Monday. All right. Let's, we have a choice. We can either have this discussion in here, or we can have the discussion at our regular meeting on the resolution. We have a draft, and protocol-wise, it could be adopted tonight. That's a question to both the attorney and to the city clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then the question is the wardsmithing.
We have a Neil and wardsmith out there.
That's fine. We may, is that agreeable with everybody?
Yeah. Let's do it in a public session.
All right. All right. We will adjourn the work session, and we'll be in at 7:00